Call us back to order from closed session. City Attorney, please report out.
Thank you, Mayor. The Emeryville City Council and the successor agency met in closed session on the items listed on the closed session agenda regarding item 5.1.1 direction was given regarding item 6.1.1 direction was given and regarding item 6.2.1 direction was given. That's the conclusion of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we had a holdover question from public comment. Did they ever work out their technical issues, City Clerk?
They left the call and I don't see them on here now.
If they jump in during a later meeting, just let us know and we'll come back to them.
Okay.
So, thank you. And with that, it is 6:37. The closed session meeting is adjourned. And tell me when you're ready and I'll call the study session to order. I believe we are running late for it.
We are ready.
Okay. All right, it's September 15th. I called the special study session meeting to order. It is 6:38. Do you need us to roll call?
Yes, please. Councilmember Bowers?
Here.
Councilmember Donahue?
Here.
Councilmember Medina?
Here.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Here.
And Mayor Pats?
I am here. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the final agenda?
I move approval.
And I'll second it. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye. Okay, any ex parte communications? You almost got me there, Member Medina. Seeing none, we'll go right to public comment for this item.
I have no online speaker cards and no raised hands.
Okay. I don't think anybody's participating by phone, so we can go right into the study session item. City Manager? 6.1.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we have a study session regarding the city's budget. We had promised you in June that would be back in September, and here we are. I am joined this evening by our interim Finance Director, Bill Zanoni, who he and I have been working very closely on this project to bring you a new five-year forecast and to discuss with you some strategies, or to just say to begin the discussion of some strategies to address the fiscal situation that the city of Emeryville is facing. I will say, the city of Emeryville is not alone in facing this challenge. It's regional, it's national, if not global, in terms of the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic on our economy. Emeryville is somewhat unique in terms of its revenue structure and the impacts of the pandemic on our revenues. So I will address that as we go through this. But what I want to start by saying is that we are very fortunate that this council and prior councils have adopted prudent fiscal strategies and prudent policies around how money has been spent, how money has been accumulated, and how we have set ourselves up to face this kind of a situation. So we have resources that we can use strategically. But the magnitude of the situation is such that there is no one single solution. There need to be many solutions. As the staff has heard me say a number of times, I feel like it's a little bit like stone soup. Everybody has to bring a little something to make this work. And I feel confident that we can do that. Tonight is the beginning of that discussion. Staff is not asking you to take any action tonight or to give any specific direction, but we would like to share with you the information that we've developed and to start a discussion. And if you have any things that you would like us to research further before we come back to you in October, it would be very helpful if you would give us that insight tonight about what you're interested in and us looking into further. So my presentation tonight, I will attempt to do my share screen, is essentially three parts. One, I will walk you through two scenarios of a five-year forecast. And given the time, I will try to move quickly, more quickly through that. Two scenarios of a five-year forecast, a list of some strategies, some budget strategies, to get us thinking about different options that we have. And then finally, a timeline that basically goes from now to next September in terms of what we will be asking the council to engage with us in terms of the budget. So with that, let me do this. Where's my screen, Sherry? Here we go. Okay. Someone confirm that I'm effectively sharing my screen? Yes?
You are.
Thank you. What you have in front of you is, in your packet, is the scenario one of our five-year forecast. This is a projected growth scenario. And then scenario two is a faster growth scenario. This sheet, which is the top sheet in your attachment, is a rolled-up set of results, annual operating results. And I'm just going to take a minute to walk you through it because I think it's important to understand the structure because you will be seeing this again and again as we come back to you to discuss our budget. And as things change, we will show you where the changes show up in this format and then in the succeeding pages, which are more detailed. So what this is, is the annual operating results, meaning all of our revenues, all of our expenditures. How did we end each year? So for 1819, two years ago, we had 47.5 million in revenues. We had 43.6 million, 43.7 million in expenditures. We ended the year thus with a positive result of $3.09 million. So we ended that year to the positive. So all of our revenues were $47.5 million. In June, for fiscal 1920, we came back to you and we asked you to amend the budget because we knew the pandemic crisis had significantly affected the final quarter of the year. So we asked you to adopt a reduced revenue budget of $40.5 million. And our expenditures were $43.5 million. So we projected that we would be in the negative by $3 million. You authorized us to use one-time funds to cover that deficit for 1920 if we needed it. Fast forward, we closed the books. We are in the process of closing the books. We mostly closed the books for 1920. Our revenues came in slightly better, so about $2 million better. And we can talk about why that was, but that's good news. And staff did a really great job of managing expenditures. So our expenditures actually came in lower. So again, in 1920, we ended the year to the good, $1.33 million. But just a reminder, look at these revenue figures. This is 1920. This is 1819. So yes, this is a good result, but it's still $5 million less in revenue between 1920 and the prior fiscal year. So that's where we ended the year. We did not have to use any of those one-time funds, one-time strategies, I should say, because we ended the year to the good. So now we are in fiscal year 2021. This was the budget you all adopted in June. So we amended the 2021 budget in June, again with a revised revenue figure of $38.9 million, the same expenditures that were originally projected for this fiscal year. And we knew with this scenario, we would end the year in the negative, $6.4 million. We presented to you a series of one-time strategies to cover that deficit using accumulated commercial transfer tax, reducing some transfers in, for example, to the litigation fund. There's a series of things that you approved us to do to cover that deficit. When we presented this budget to you in June, we said to you, and a couple of you affirmed, that we were likely to be wrong on those revenues because we were doing this at the beginning of the pandemic situation and we did not know how bad it could get. We still don't really know. With that said, however, we've had several more months of experience. We've had the opportunity to consult with additional folks who are looking at the economy. And what we are now telling you for 2021 is that our revenues are likely to come in about $5 million lower. So $33 million in revenue. Expenditures stay functionally the same. That means our deficit for this fiscal year is $11.7 million, projected based on this revised revenue structure. So the reason that grows is because the revenue goes down. Deficit gets worse when the revenue goes down. What this schedule does for you is it projects out through 2024, 2025, the same structure. So projected revenues. And then these are all of our expenditure lines each year. So this is the deficit each fiscal year. This isn't cumulative, this is annual. Now, that's all rolled up. And I just want to go through. These are the line items of revenue. See if I can make this a little bigger. So what you see is for sales tax, in 1819, we brought in about $8.7 million. In 1920, the fiscal year that just ended, that dropped to $7 million. In June, we gave you a projection of $6.6 million. Based on further analysis, we are slightly more confident that our sales tax this fiscal year will come in at $7.3 million. And then we built in a growth factor for that revenue line over the five-year forecast so that it grows back in the final year to $8.8 million. That line is healthier, sorry, than a couple of the other revenue lines that I want to focus on, one of which is business license tax. $6.4 million in 1819, dropping to $6 million in 1920. But what you see here is we're projecting it to be $4.7 million in 2021. Why is that? That's because the sales, the business license tax is paid on gross receipts from the year prior. So in 2021, the taxes that we'll receive are based on the gross receipts that businesses are seeing in 2020. And obviously, 2020 is not a good year. So we are projecting that our business license tax drops and then in this scenario, grows back at a 3% growth rate. Transient, I'm going to skip over the card room for a minute. We can talk about that later because I want to get to your questions. But the transient occupancy tax is our biggest challenge right now. In 1819, we brought in $8.7 million. Last year, that dropped to $6 million predominantly because of the effective shutdown in the final quarter of the year. In June, we had optimistically projected $6.5 million as we expected the hotel economy to recover. Councilmembers cautioned us on that in June. You were accurate. We are now projecting $1.3 million in that revenue stream in this fiscal year based on the lack of recovery in the hotel industry. This scenario builds in a growth factor, a very limited growth factor for that revenue stream each year. We have a more aggressive growth factor in the next scenario, which I can show you. I think I won't go through the next set of these because I want to focus on the impact of the unassigned fund balance. So... Let me combine two things. Try to speed this up. This is the faster revenue growth scenario. So this is scenario two, faster revenue growth. And I'll go through the line items that reflect the faster growth scenario. But what you'll see on the bottom line here as we go out for the remainder of the five years is that those annual deficits are a little bit less. And that's because the revenues are projected to grow a little bit faster. If you look at the detail sheet that follows, what we've done is we've highlighted those areas where we have different growth assumptions for revenue. So for example, in this scenario, our property taxes are growing by 3%. The sales taxes stay the same because we're fairly confident. We've consulted with two different firms now about those sales tax figures. Business license taxes are projected to grow by 8% per year. We have a more aggressive growth scenario for the card room. It opens more quickly and it regains its growth. We have a more aggressive growth for TOT. And then this is a transfer tax. So let me go down. These are all of our expenditures. These expenditures stay the same in both scenarios. We have not modified those at all. But what you will see, and I want to talk about this for just a minute, this number down here is what's called the ending unassigned fund balance. What that is, is the accumulation of those annual operating results. So when we have positive annual operating results and they are not spent or allocated to anything, they accumulate. We are projecting to have $9 million of ending unassigned fund balance. That can be assigned to cover the deficits. And that's what this schedule shows, is that we apply the one... So here's our $11 million for 2021. We apply those one-time strategies that we talked about and the council authorized earlier. We apply about $5 million, I'll put that number written down exactly, of the unassigned fund balance, and we close that deficit. And we still end the year with about a little over $4 million of ending unassigned fund balance, which then carries forward and is applied in the next fiscal year. So that becomes the target deficit in 2122. I'm going to move to our strategies. And I can go back and answer questions about any of this.
Well, she's doing that. Fellow council members, feel free to interrupt because I cannot see you all when we are in a presentation. So if you have a question, feel free to just ask.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm just going to keep moving so I can get this done, so you can ask questions. So in terms of strategies, these are in your staff report. There are a whole host of strategies and there are more that we can all come up with as a collective. These are presented in no particular order, but simply as discussion topics. They are organized by type. So the first grouping is one-time revenue. So we just talked a little bit about the unassigned fund balance. So that would be drawing that down and applying that to cover those deficits. The economic uncertainty reserve, that is the reserve that the city council created several years ago, 50% of operating expenditures. So that is about $22 million right now, which is a very healthy reserve. But as you saw, if all that was done was apply it to the deficits, it would be gone in two years. So that is something that we can talk about how to use strategically to help bridge us through the economic recovery. We have a PERS liability fund that the council has set up to deal with unexpected rate increases. That could happen in the final two years of the forecast, given what PERS could be going through. So that could be a source to deal with those increases. There is still $3 million in the disaster fund. So I would recommend we keep that because it seems like there are disasters that keep happening. But it is important to know that that resource is there should we need it in the future. The next category is ongoing cost savings. Freezing vacant positions. You've already done some of that in the budget amendments that were adopted in June. There were about six positions that were frozen. We are currently monitoring our vacancies and being very careful about filling them, trying to see what the impacts of that will be on program. Shifting positions to appropriate non-general fund sources. So there are some positions that are paid for by the general fund that could be paid for by different funds. For example, the affordable housing fund could support a staff person. A cost allocation plan to ensure the general fund recovers appropriate costs from other funds. That is a mechanism that many cities use to allocate time. So for example, when the city attorney works on... If the city attorney is consistently working on a type of work for a special fund, say it's the Marina Fund, or if we created an enterprise fund for planning and building funds, we could have an annual cost allocation plan that allocated a portion of his time to that fund and not to the general fund. But we need to develop that plan and it needs to be thoughtful and approved by the council and then reviewed every few years. So that would be something, if we did it, it would take us a minute and we would probably propose it to you in the spring for the next two-year budget. Reducing and reorganizing city programs. Frankly, community services is going through that right now because of the impacts of COVID on the size of the programs they're able to offer. So Pedro and Brad and his team are really looking carefully at what they can support with the staffing that we have and what that's going to look like going into the future. Shifting eligible expenses to the quarter cent sales tax. As we've talked about before, we have not programmed in on either the revenue or expenditure sides the results of the quarter cent sales tax that the voters approved in March. That is because we do not know what those remittances from the state are going to be until we receive them. And also with the change in what's happening economically, obviously, our initial cost, our initial revenue estimates for that are not going to be realized. We will be able to report back to you on that with more information in January. And as you know, you have a limited list of eligible expenses. It is the council's discretion and decision how to apply those funds to that list. And then finally, labor negotiations, of course, our labor contracts. Our biggest cost is all of us. We haven't, we don't have any strategy around that at this point, but it is, of course, on the list. And then the last category is ongoing revenue. So tax measures. You have two opportunities in 2022. A special tax could go on the ballot in March and a general tax could go on the ballot in November. Assessment districts, that is something, you're familiar with that because of the property-based improvement district for the Emery Go Round. There are other kinds of assessment districts, such as a landscaping, lighting assessment district, that the city would run a mail ballot election. So we would not have to wait until 2022. If the council was interested in exploring something like that, that could happen in 2021. So that's a whole bunch of budget strategies that we can talk about. And here is the timeline that we are proposing. It's not a timeline, it's just I want to make it clear to you that we're going to be back in front of you a lot. We're having this study session. We had a meeting with the Budget and Governance Committee on the 3rd of this month. We will be meeting with that committee and also the Budget Advisory Committee in October. I think it's the 8th. On the 20th, we are proposing to come back to you all for some decisions for this fiscal year, perhaps talking about, for example, that use of the unassigned fund balance. We have, again, budget committee meetings in December. We would like to come back to you in January for another study session to give you an update on the five-year forecast. Like I mentioned, the sales tax measure. And then also further direction on how to implement some of the strategies that we've been talking about. Further committees in February and March, another study session in April. We will be deep in preparation of the next two-year budget at that time. The master fee schedule comes up, and I think we actually have to move that up into April. And then finally, the June council meetings for consideration and approval of the next two-year budget. And then back to you again a year from now to give you a year-end review and also an update on the forecast. So with that, I'm happy, very happy to stop talking and take your questions. And Bill is here also to take your questions. And I can stop sharing if that's helpful.
Please, Bill. Um, all right. Questions?
Mr. Steve, can you mute yourself real quick?
What's up?
Can you mute yourself for a moment?
It was, she was the high-pitched buzzing.
I think it was the fan on her computer.
Okay, yes. The high-pitched buzzing sound was coming from you. All right.
Sorry, this is my lone computer because my computer died.
Yeah. So I'm sorry, any fiscal or budget-related questions? I should have been more specific.
What's the likelihood of new business coming into the city in the next couple of years?
We are still attractive to lab and tech. Chad and I have had a couple of meetings just recently. So I think that we will still see growth in that sector. So that's one thing that's positive.
Okay. Okay. Any other members have questions? Okay. Okay. Should we take public comment on this item? I'm sorry, that was a statement, not a question. Sherry, do we have any public comment on this item?
Not for this meeting, no, and I don't see any raised hands.
Okay, I see the person who was trying to speak at the last meeting there. I will give them this opportunity as well if they want to make their comment from our prior meeting now. Now they are muted. Okay, we have a theme for the night. Mr. Donahue, if you'd unmute yourself, you would be able to talk. All right, I'm going to come back and we'll have a discussion and see if we can get that worked out by our next meeting. So any discussion on this? Anybody have any comments they'd like to make? Member Martinez or Vice Mayor Martinez?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had the pleasure of receiving this presentation already at the Budget and Governance meeting. And I just want to thank staff for clearly laying out the heavy task that we have before us. I'm definitely interested in looking at an assessment district and I'd love to send staff in that direction as well as exploring what tax measures we can put on the ballot in 2022. I don't think it's too early to start looking at those options.
Thank you. Other members? Member Medina, I saw your hand first, then I'll go to Member Donahue.
I'd like to thank our Budget Advisory Committee for having, in our Budget Committee, for having given us great advice to have brought us to this point where we can look at a disaster and calmly assess our options rather than set this giant paper on fire. I think that the options laid out in the staff report are extremely helpful. I am not interested in touching the PERS reserve, but I am interested in using the unassigned fund balance incrementally and some of our economic uncertainty reserve incrementally to ease us through this, in addition to freezing vacant positions and potentially using cost allocation or shifting to other fund sources. In terms of increased revenues, which we'll absolutely need to do, I am interested, I echo Member Martinez's comments on looking at new taxes. I have been interested in exploring what an IPO tax could look like in Emeryville with our booming fire taxing. Would like to, you know, thoughtfully engage around that conversation early.
Thank you. Member Donahue?
You know, just thinking about our empty ground floor above multifamily housing markets. You know, is there any way we could motivate more commercial activity where we have space that's unrented? Perhaps it's a kind of tax or some other kind of look at how we can get more economic activity out of this underused space.
So are you thinking of vacancy tax, Scott?
Perhaps. Or something else that might not just be that, but something that might really encourage actual commercial activity that would generate funds for us.
Thank you, Member Donahue. Member Bowers, do you have anything to add? Member Bowers, do you have anything to add?
No, I don't, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate all of the work staff has done. I've worked very closely with the city manager and I want to give a special shout out to Bill Zanoni for his, his time here. The August month was a recess for many people, but not for the Budget and Governance Committee. And I want to thank Councilmember Martinez for her enduring partnership in the long road I know we have together going forward. But I appreciate getting the input of council colleagues tonight, I'm just listening today.
So I want to echo what my colleagues have said this evening. I appreciate the work and I want to say publicly something that the city manager and I, that I said to the city manager privately as we went over this. I really appreciate the job both the Budget and Governance Committee and the city manager and the city staff have done of having this conversation, not just today, but we've been having it for over a year now and really sort of saying, this is coming. We didn't think it would come this quickly all at once, nor did we think it would be this particularly hard-hitting to the specific industries that fuel our city government in town. We are probably one of the more reliant on transit occupancy taxes. I think there's maybe us and Las Vegas. I'm sure I'm missing some other place, but so we didn't quite see that coming. But I really appreciate, Bill, I really appreciate the city manager and all of staff for making sure this was an ongoing conversation. And I think it's a reflection of the work the Budget and Governance Committees do. And I appreciate that, so thank you. I am very interested in the special district for the lighting and landscaping and I'm sure we'll come up with a clever name for it because double L's. I'm hoping there's a llama involved in the acronym. But I also want to look at, you know, I think what Member Donahue was saying about the vacant spaces. And sort of Chad, I'm sure you're out there, this is kind of to you and to Mr. Bryant, looking at some of our spaces that are dedicated to retail and/or some mixed-use stuff, but we need to broaden out the uses as we are in a very changed landscape of what types of businesses people are looking to visit in town. I think the restaurant industry and the retail industry is going to look differently as we move forward. And so making sure that the landlords are not only encouraged to rent out their vacant spaces, but given some flexibility as to what they can use them for. And I apologize for being so broad on that, but I want to be very broad. I think it's really important that we not stay fixed in what we see each area of the town being as things have changed. We are not the city we were five years ago. Maybe not even the city we were five months ago. Let me get back to my agenda. All right, that is the only item in this study session. Do, I want to make sure we've got everything covered. Do you need any direction from us beyond what you've gotten, City Manager?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've heard, I think we will do more research into the assessment district and bring back further information on that in October when we bring back some decisions for you to make with regard to this fiscal year's budget.
Thank you very much. All right, I see 7:10. I believe our next meeting is going to start until 7:15. So with that, I adjourn this meeting and I'll see you guys in five minutes. Pursuant order after the successor agency, or do you want me to do? Before to get it out of the way for both.
That's good, too.
Makes more sense to me as I'm at the moment. All right, I show 7:15.
Yes, we are good to go.
Which means it's like 9:15 where Mr. Bowers is. There you are, perfect. All right. I call this meeting of the successor agency on 9:15:20 to order. It is 7:15, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bowers?
Here.
Councilmember Donahue?
Here.
Councilmember Medina?
Here.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Here.
And Mayor Pats?
I am here. I would like to state for the record that this meeting is being conducted by teleconference pursuant to the Brown Act waivers provided for under the Governor's Executive Order in response to COVID-19 state of emergency. During the public health emergency, City Hall is closed to the public. The agenda states that the public may view this meeting because it's being livestreamed online and on ETV Channel 27 and provide comment by submitting an online comment card, which they can read, which will then be read into the record by staff. The comment form can be accessed by going to our main City of Emeryville website at emeryville.org and clicking on Council Agendas and Videos. Once there, you will see a link entitled Submit an Online Speaker Card. The public also has the option of participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom and may provide public comment during the meeting using the Raise Your Hand feature visible on your screen. Or if you're calling in, press star nine. The Zoom call-in information was provided on the posted agenda as well as via e-notification and on social media. Okay. Did we do, we did roll call, correct? Okay, call for a motion and second to approve the final agenda.
I'm moved.
Second vote, please.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye. Now is the time for public comment portion of this meeting. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to items not on the agenda or on the consent agenda should have submitted their online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you're participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please raise your hand feature visible on your screen. If you are calling in, press star nine. At this time, I will ask the clerk whether any comments have been received via the online comment card.
No online comment cards, but we have a raised hand from Mr. Brian Donahue.
I see that. He has the floor.
Go ahead, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
This is the first time I've done, done the camera part of Zoom. I've always done the call-in previously. Now, is my image visible or no?
No, just your name and speak just a bit louder, please.
Is this normal, the images are not visible? Speakers, images are not visible, that's standard?
You probably don't have your camera on or there's not a camera on your device.
Okay, all right, so I'm calling mostly just to test because it's the first time I've done it, but I do want to mention these two corporations operating in Emeryville, development corporations, Holiday Development and Lennar. They are just refusing to have their workers wear masks. So far, every single time, 100% of the time I've checked, I've checked by, from the sidewalk, looking, looking at the work being performed via binoculars. 100% of the time I've checked, they are, there are violations happening. So I, I'm, I'm kind of finished appealing to the two companies because they just clearly just don't care. So now I'm going to start only appealing to the City of Emeryville. This is your, your problem. And I've just, I'm, I'm just imploring you. I'm, I'm, I want the city to start taking this COVID virus seriously. And so I've, I've made some complaints and so far the city has verified one of my complaints that in fact Lennar is not wearing masks. And, but the other, I have two other complaints pending and so far no, nothing on that. The city has not checked to verify. So I just want, I want the city to come down on these companies that are violating the, the mask-wearing order from the county. And I just want you guys to start taking this seriously. That's all, thank you very much.
Okay, that brings us to the consent calendar. Do I have a motion for the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second?
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye.
Okay, with that, we have no action items. I see it's 7:20 and we stand adjourned. I'll give the city clerk a moment to spin up for the next meeting and let me know when you're ready.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm ready.
All right, I call this meeting to order of the city council's regular meeting on 9:15:20. It is now 7:20. And I think we can skip the roll call because we just did it and I'll slow down a little bit here and see if the, either of the longest-serving council members, Member Martinez or Member Donahue, would like to make a motion for the final agenda.
I'll move the final agenda.
And I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the final agenda. Please call the vote.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye.
Okay, we have no special orders of the day. Announcements of commission and committee vacancies?
No announcement tonight, thank you.
Okay, meetings attended or other special announcements from members?
I do.
Go ahead, Member Bowers, sorry, as I looked away from my screen.
That's okay, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to announce after a marathon meeting at the Alameda County Transportation Commission yesterday, three hours were spent at committee on the proposal to amend the transportation expenditure plan for 2014 Measure BB, which is something the city and its council members supported. The committee recommended, with one no vote, the committee recommended removing the BART to Livermore expenditure from the transportation expenditure plan, which is one of the highest ticket items in the plan of the 22 original items and replacing it with the ValleyLink proposal. The full commission will vote on that amendment proposal on September 24th. It requires a supermajority vote to be approved pursuant to the ballot measure. I will say that I proposed additional language be included in the amendment that will at a minimum require the initial construction phase for ValleyLink to go into San Joaquin County, which then necessitates that they pass an initiative of some kind to help fund their portion of the project. So in other words, Alameda County will not expend construction funds on this project until San Joaquin County has dedicated its own funds to contribute to the first segment. That was a significant discussion item, but it was ultimately accepted and approved. And so that will be up for final discussion on the 24th of September.
Thank you. Anybody else attend any meetings, want to share out? Member Medina and then Vice Mayor Martinez afterwards.
Councilmember Bowers and I also attended our inter-agency liaison committee meeting with ACTC last week. During that week, we did receive update that the San Pablo corridor redesign would move forward first in a pilot phase with a potential three-year delivery for Design A, which is bus and bike lanes on San Pablo through Emeryville and Oakland, just those two cities. That is what our city has been pushing for. So it's great to hear that ACTC has been trusted moving forward on that pilot. And I thank Councilmember Bowers for his support and work with me on this project for the past several years.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, last week I attended the Fire Advisory Committee for Alameda County Fire and we have a new chief, Chief McDonald. And I'm happy to report that there was interest from several of the members to discuss diversity, equity and inclusion going forward in the fire service. Not only with recruitment, but looking at the barriers that are keeping folks who want to be in fire service from succeeding in those professions. I also, I, I should have actually mentioned this during item three because I had meant to ask to adjourn in memory of former mayor and councilmember Nora Davis. But for those members of the public who have not learned, we have lost one of Emeryville's greatest leaders. Nora Davis served on Emeryville City Council for 27 years, many times. She was our mayor and so many changes were experienced under her guard. And so I just wanted to make note of that and hope that we can continue to serve her memory. And I, I also wanted to mention that I asked the Commission on Aging to please consider putting an item on their agenda for their next meeting so that they can advise on, on ways that the city might remember Nora. Those are the meetings I've attended, thank you.
Member Donahue, any meetings?
No meetings.
Member Bowers, coming back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to, given the update from Councilmember Medina, I just wanted to update that the Projects and Programs Committee at ACTC yesterday recommended the initial Phase Two piloting of San Pablo Avenue, which included the comments that the council member already mentioned. So ACTC will also vote on September 24th to actually formally approve that as Phase Two of the plan.
Thank you. So I want to first follow up on what the Vice Mayor was saying. I was looking to the two members of council who served with, with Councilmember Davis. And just a couple of quick highlights, she served on council for 29 years. Sorry, I was, I should have been more upfront about what I was fishing for, which is quite impressive. She uh she served as mayor in 93, 96, 97, 2001, 2007, and 2011. So a pretty impressive resume. And with a little indulgence here, um our wonderful staff prepped me for this moment and gave me a quote. But I am going to see if I can get Mr. Bryant. Are you on the phone? Instead of saying what he said, if I can add, and if you'll indulge me, I'll ask him to say it uh himself, if that's okay with Mr. Bryant.
Uh, certainly. It's very brief. You want the quote from uh council, from Councilmember Davis?
Uh, it was your quote, I thought, about Councilmember Davis.
Oh, well, I did note that she was a stalwart of the community and had been here for, been at the council for a long time. I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me, so I'm gonna do this by memory. But um she also noted that uh she she was on the council when big changes occurred, which brought a lot of new residents into the city, which also therefore engendered some issues about typical urban problems, including noise and traffic and other such things, which I'm sure you're all familiar with. And what Councilmember Davis said about that was that mixed use is a mixed blessing.
Yes. Thank you. And I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but I like things like this to be extrovertious.
That's quite all right. Thank you.
And not so scripted because I think it comes from the heart then. Um, and me just saying things would ring untrue and unfelt. And I think it's really telling. I know from uh having disagreements with her and talking to many of former council members about what a strong-willed and vibrant person she was and for staff who worked with her that long to speak highly of her and remember her fondly just tells you that you can lead both powerfully, strongly, and civilly, which is something I think a lesson the world could learn right now. Member Martinez?
I just wanted to to note that um I would caucus with Nora on issues where we disagree disagree completely. And I don't know if that happens a lot. If folks um on legislative bodies or, you know, who create policy um will work together from just opposite ends of the room, and she was the person to do that with because she spoke her mind. Um, but as soon as the meeting was over, it, there, there was no bad blood. She was truly Emeryville first, and I felt like even when I was on council with her, that I was one of her constituents. And I, I want to carry that legacy forward and and make sure that um that I I serve, I always remember um the way she served our community.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, everybody. I'm sorry, Member Donahue, are we gonna say something?
Well, I just want to echo what Diane said when uh my tenure here in Emeryville uh had Nora wonderfully clearing out our corrupt police of chief that we had, John Lacoste. She was like stridently opposed to that kind of corruption. But, you know, years of disagreement with her about everything from turning our city into a retail mecca. I preferred office and other commercial uses and worked hard at making local measures to try to oppose the major retail expansion. And Nora never held any of this against me personally. And uh, you know, it continued on on the council. She was uh remarkably civil. And uh, you know, that that just, that helps when most of what the council does is agree on various things. So that, you know, when you have a disagreement, you can still be civil. What's not to like about that?
Thank you. I, I always struggle with that. I am not a civil person when I am passionate about something. Um, so I think that is an important lesson for all of us to learn. I will end as I began and say, you know, I think she's right. Mixed use is a mixed blessing. She brought us a lot of conservation along the coast. And I really appreciate her for that. And uh I still blame her for the ECL. And uh so I think that's the way people are. We are a mixed bag of people and we bring good and bad. And uh I think it's important that we recognize when people are no longer with us, all the wonderful things and the lessons we can learn from them and not just focus in on all the positive or all the negatives. I'm a big believer that we are the sum total of our actions, not any one thing. And yet I'm uncivil in disagreement. Go figure. So enlightened and so behind all at once. I have a couple other quick announcements and then we'll get back to the agenda. Um, because I know people are waiting. A couple of quick things. I attended the uh Mayor's Conference. And one of the things that all mayors are struggling with is what to do around Halloween. And um I think we're gonna struggle with that and people are. I was really excited to get some good ideas and we got nothing. Um, and so uh, other than the mayor of Alameda gives out a lot of candy. And so I was envious of that. Um, I buy a lot of candy. I don't give out a lot of candy. Um, so that was the Mayor's Conference. Now, oh, and it did allow me, I was gonna mention this to the Vice Mayor. I got to meet the new fire chief and he seems like a pretty good person, a local. I do worry um that we will not have him as long as I would like, just because of the nature of his lengthy career. Um, and then I also changed, uh attended Haka and I just found it amusing. The big thing we did at Haka was disband a nonprofit. It was kind of nice. I think entities hold over, long past their usefulness. They haven't met in five years. And the first thing the new director did was step in and disband it. So it was my one and only meeting on that nonprofit as a board member was to vote to disband it. And then finally, um I attended the Housing Committee, no, sorry, changing that, the Art Committee meeting. And I would be remiss if I didn't announce the Emeryville Celebration for the Arts coming in October. So opening night will be a Zoom party on October 2nd at 6:00 PM. The invitations are currently being sent out. And this is late breaking news. They have scoured the earth and looking for a uh a host, an MC. And uh I will, cannot reveal who because I don't think it's official yet, but the person themselves is huge. So uh that, and an amazingly awesome person. So they're big. I didn't say famous, but big and amazing. So uh that's exciting. It runs from the October 2nd till November 1st. It will include uh some street banners that are looking really good. Um, with a tour map, announcements of the annual purchase award, a People's Choice Award. There'll be some poetry workshops uh and readings and more. And everyone's encouraged to sign up at www dot emeryarts dot org to receive updates and more. Bear with me as I get back to our agenda. Um.
Mayor?
Yes.
Anyone gonna mention the drive-in?
Oh, the success of the drive. We kept it so quiet because we didn't want it to be overrun. Oh my gosh, thank you so much. We had our first drive-in movie. We had movies in the park. We've had dive-in movies, but this year we had our first drive-in movie, which was at um Public Market and it was amazing. It seemed to be a little over the 50-person cap, or 50-car capacity. Uh, but it looked to me like Emory PD, Emory Fire, and city staff found a way for them to uh crash the party safely. Uh, a big shout out to um Pink and Pickle, Pink and, Pink and, Pick and the Pickle. Sorry, I can never say the barbecue place's name. They did popcorn and sausages. A couple of other places were open, but they specifically had a movie menu, a movie menu. I want a big, big shout out to Pixar for giving us uh Onward to Show for free. And if you don't know what it costs to show a movie, it's quite expensive, particularly for Onward, which did not get a true theater run, um a movie that we enjoyed. And I, gosh, I saw everybody out there, Pedro and Brad and all of Community Services for their hard work. I really appreciate it. It was a great event. So thank you. And uh, Member Medina, thank you for reminding me. I feel so lost in all that's going on. Um, but it was a great time and we might do it again. It was such a success that we might revisit it. So um keep your eyes open because the window is about this big to register. I had people text me saying they heard it was happening. They went to register and it was sold out before they got their friends to register. So um helps that I know Pedro. He saved me a spot. So, all right. That was a lot of special announcements. City Manager, I dare you to top that.
I won't even try. Nothing from me. Thanks.
Excellent. All right. Ex parte communications. Member Bouters.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm trying to find the numbers here on my, my, toggling my screen so I can accurately describe the agenda. Um, on items 12.1, I've had conversations with um members of Secure Justice and other criminal justice organizations. And on 12.2, as a member of the League of California Cities, I've had communications with the League and the Public Safety Committee.
Thank you. Others? Member Medina.
Um, I received communications um from, I think, the applicant for 11.1, the email. Probably all of us did.
Yep. Same for that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Member Donahue, I see you're saying you had the same communication. Anything else from you, Member Donahue?
Uh, no.
Okay, and Vice Mayor?
I actually don't have anything, but I'm just gonna preview for you that I will be recusing myself from item 11.1. And I'll give more information at that time when the item is called.
Perfect. So I had the same community, the same email communication from the applicant for 11.1. And I had a couple of conversations with neighbors in that neighborhood. Okay. Uh, public comments for items um on the consent agenda or any items not on the agenda. We will take those now. If you have a speaker card, it's not too late to submit it. Or if you want to raise your hand, uh either do it in Zoom or press star nine.
Mayor Pats, I have received two uh online comment cards, so I'll read those to you now and time myself while I do it. Uh, this one comes from Matt. My comments. As the election season is coming up, I would like to draw your attention to Prop 16, which is about government preferences. The California Constitution says, "The state shall not discriminate against or grant preferential treatment to any individual or group on the basis of race, sex, color, ethnicity, or natural, national origin in the operation of public employment, public education, or public contracting. Proposition 16 will strike out and eliminate this language from the California Constitution. No substitute is provided. However, the summary being put forth to voters is that this allows diversity as a factor in public employment, education, and contracting decisions, legislative constitutional amendment. If diversity is the goal, according to the summary, why eliminate the Constitution that says you cannot benefit one race, gender, or over the, another? Why not propose a proposition that says it? If you specifically benefit one race or gender over another, isn't that discrimination? Some people say that this proposition will hurt one or two races specifically because of their higher performances in college admissions, which I don't agree with. In the long run, it hurts everyone and it hurts our state because Proposition 16 will eliminate equal opportunity and fair competition, which made California one of the most prosperous and diversified states in the whole country. Therefore, I urge the city council to take a position to oppose Prop 16. Prop 16 will legalize discrimination and waste tax money to fund the bureaucracy. Our city doesn't need it. California doesn't need it. Thank you."
Have another card?
Yes. This one is from anonymous. I am announcing a new criterion for Emeryville City Hall at public meetings. Undemocratically inclined city council members are hereby ordered to turn off their Zoom connection during public comment when the commenter is offering criticism of public policy. The reason is because public officials should never have to listen to any member of the public that claims the council is doing a bad job on something. Government officials should only listen to citizens who offer praise. This is especially crucial in the case of our thin-skinned mayor, Christian Pats. Accordingly, Miss Mayor Pats is hereby ordered off any city sanctioned Zoom call whenever any citizens offer criticism. If Brian Donahue, a private citizen slash journalist who is frequently critical of the council's public policy, calls into the meeting, Mr. Pats must immediately leave and blank his screen. Upon completion of Mr. Donahue's comment period, Mayor Pats is ordered to return to the Zoom call and resume his mayoral duties.
Is that it for public comment?
I see a raised hand, but it's uh.
But he's already had his three minutes. Uh, that said, um, let's go ahead and take the raised hand.
Okay, I have not had my three minutes, but I'm having it now. I'm happy that Mr. Pats has blanked his screen as he is ordered to do. So good job, uh Mayor Pats. Uh, I'd like to say that in the progressive Bay Area, everyone, it seems, is progressive. So our city council is also progressive. That's what they tell us anyway. But what constitutes being a progressive? Do progressive politicians permit free speech? Yes, they do. Free speech represents the most fundamental, fundamental tenet of progressive governing philosophy. And yet, two council members, Ally Medina and the mayor, Christian Pats, can't wrap their heads around the idea that citizens are allowed to express their opinions, for instance, that their government isn't working. Both these failed progressives are paid to listen to citizens, but they have shown that they can't countenance it. Ms. Medina, with their attempt to stop the public criticizing the bike committee's falsely glowing official annual report, when Mr. Pats attempts to use the city attorney as a cover to stop critical citizen, citizen comments. It shouldn't matter that the comments in question have been critical of public policy rather than directed at the personal foibles of council members, but the fact that it doesn't makes this even more egregious. While they may embrace progressive ideology in the aggregate, Mayor Pats and Councilmember Medina have shown that they are illiberal at their core. Even the late council member Nora Davis, a self-styled conservative not fond of dissenters, knew enough that accepting criticism from the public comes with the job. Uh, Ma, uh, Christian Pats and Ally Medina are taking our money, but they're failing to do the simplest, most basic part of their job. And I say the people of Emeryville deserve better than this. And now uh the mayor is ordered to turn back on his uh camera. My comments are complete.
Okay, uh, any other public comment at this point, City Clerk?
No. Uh, no, there, there is none, Mayor.
All right, I have one request. When you document this in the minutes, I, please be sure to capture the anonymous person who was clearly not Mr. Donahue. Be sure that you capture them correctly and point out that he called me thin. It may have been a word after that, but you just need to capture the first one. I don't get that often enough, so I'm gonna take it this evening as a win. Do we have a motion for the consent calendar?
I'm moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Member Medina and a second from the Vice Mayor.
Councilmember Bouters.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Aye.
And Mayor Pats.
Aye. Okay, that brings us to item 11.1, the public hearing. Do we have a staff presentation?
Yes.
Member Martinez, you have to say something. That's right. Go ahead.
Yes, I need to recuse myself from this agenda item involving the 47th Street Homes Project. I own real property located in Assessor Parcel Number 49-1081-1, which is in, within 500 feet of the project site, and this property is my primary residence. So I will be leaving the Zoom meeting. And um if someone could text me when you're done with this item, I'll hop back in.
You're actually going to leave?
I'm gonna leave. So long.
Bye.
Bye.
City Manager, I'm gonna designate you to be the official texter on that.
We'll do that, Mr. Mayor, yes.
Thank you. I believe Navarro is speaking.
That's correct. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council.
Welcome.
Thank you. Should I bring up, begin the uh presentation now?
Please.
Thank you. Um, after my presentation, the applicant is also present at this meeting and would also like to have a brief presentation to the council. Uh, so we are looking at the 47th Streets uh Homes Project this evening at 10:34 through 10:42, 47th Street. Next slide, please. And here is that site location. And next slide, please. And zoomed in to clarify the site location on 47th Street in the triangle neighborhood between Adeline and San Pablo Avenue. Next slide, please. And here's the meeting notification area. This is 300 feet from the project site. Next slide, please. So for a quick outline tonight, we have the project background, which will be followed by the project overview, uh, general plan and zoning compliance, Housing Accountability Act, and environmental review and recommendation. Next slide, please. So let's dive into that project background. Uh, this project kicked off with a community meeting held by the project applicant on September 5th in 2019. About 20 community members attended that meeting where many concerns were raised, uh, regarding all sorts of things, including the rights of existing tenants, the treatment of the tenants by property owners, and the investment and care in the property by the owner, impacts of the proposed project on social and neighborhood cohesion. Uh, there was a general questioning of the need to demolish the existing buildings and, and saying that that, there had, if there had been ongoing maintenance, that demolishing existing buildings would not be necessary, and that concerns about impacts on the neighborhood affordability, and concerns about the aesthetics of the project, and, um, also concerns about the impacts of cutting the onsite trees, and, um, concern about the replacements, uh, displacement, pardon me, of existing tenants, and, uh, that the new units be more expensive and increase the price of units in general in the neighborhood, and that the applicant is not required to provide onsite affordable housing was raised to concern. Um, and, um, concern about the potential for future development impacts on the existing residents in the north units owned by the same property owner. And I believe that covers most of the comments from that time. The comments, uh, made at that meeting have been consistent throughout this process. Um, so I will not be going into details of the comments that were made at the subsequent meetings because those meeting, those comments have stayed consistent throughout the project. Um, on October 24th, there was a planning, in 2019, there was a Planning Commission Study Session, and seven community members spoke at that meeting. Uh, the commission requested clarification on their scope and purview for the project, which was primarily to assess if the project conforms to the general plan and zoning, and that state law limits the ability of local jurisdictions to reject proposed housing projects, and that the city's tenant protection ordinance is not administered by the Planning Commission. So that was all clarified at that meeting. The Planning Commission provided several comments at that meeting. They, they wanted some more information on the proposed projects, environmental-friendly, and energy-efficient aspects. There was a missed, mix of reactions as to the aesthetics of the project and potential for providing more open space was suggested, particularly on the roofs that would be accessed by the second-floor units. And based on the questions of the neighbors, um, flood zone information was requested to clarify, uh, there is no flood zone associated with Temescal's Creek, which is in close proximity to this project. Um, the Temescal Dam failure inundation area is here, but most of Emeryville's South of Pal Street is. Um, feedback on the site design was appreciation for the continuous curb cuts on 47th Street with parking at the rear project, and that the discards and closures were incorporated into the rear of the buildings and not detached. Next slide, please. And while we're changing slides, I'll mention that the City Council, uh, Study Session and the, oh, here we are, sorry, there we go, City Council Study Session slide is here, and the Planning Commission, uh, most recent meeting, I'll go over in more detail later in this presentation. So, uh, City Council reviewed this at a study session back in January of 2020, and City Council comments at that time were that City Council was not able to make the required findings specifically, uh, for, uh, required for demolition because it would not be mati- they could not make the finding, the elimination of their residential structure would not be materially detrimental. So other feedback was not provided, uh, because of the lack of ability to make findings. Next slide, please. So after, uh, those two meetings, after the study sessions, a peer review, uh, held by the City Consulting Arbors was done of Arbors' report provided by the applicant. So they connected the site inspection in April 2020, and, uh, of that, uh, to clarify, you'll see on some of the plans, it shows, uh, three street trees, but only one of those remains, and that, um, is due to damage and death of those trees, and they were removed by public works. Re- uh, recommended modification of the proposed tree streets. I'm having a hard time, I apologize. Uh, the Arbors recommended modifications to the proposed tree species, and recommended root barriers not be used, and identifies soil volumes, and recommended that the health rating of the three large onsite trees be upgraded. So the planning regulations state that the approval body, City Council, may require existing healthy onsite trees be preserved and incorporated into a project unless it's shown to be infeasible. So, the City Consult- the City Consulting Arbors noted that, quote, "It should be clear that the reason why retention of the large trees is not feasible is due to the potential for significant root loss from project construction, which may compromise both health and stability of the trees." So, the trees currently on the site contribute significantly to the neighborhood, and if removed, an equal or greater replacement planting is recommended. So the conditions of approval, um, were added, uh, that the landscape area, um, with cumulative diameter is equal to the, I'm sorry. I'm gonna try and say that again. It's on the slide. So basically, you need to, uh, provide more new trees than the current trees, so the cumulative diameters will add up to what's already there. Uh, next slide, please. The applicant raised concerns about the feasibility of this because that'd be so many more new trees. So modifications have been proposed that, um, would ensure that trees be provided, but not to that exact dimension necessarily. Next slide, please. So, uh, changes to the plans were made, and follow-up to the, uh, various meetings ahead of time and comments provided by Planning Commission, City Council, and the community and staff. And in addition to the changes on this slide, there was also additional documentation provided, and that has been attached to the staff report. Next slide, please. So the Planning Commission hearing that was held on June 25th, uh, there were seven public comments with three letters received, and the comments, again, were consistent with the previous comments, and the commissioners concurred with them. The commissioners voted, uh, four aye, two abstentions, and one absence. They took no action on the staff recommendation resul- uh, resolution for approval, and recommended to City Council that the project be denied. Next slide, please. So the basis of, for denial here would be the net loss of affordable units. The project is detrimental to the existing conditions, and it doesn't meet the general plan goal to have a mix of housing types, fails to meet housing element goals, and the loss of mature trees is detrimental to the city and neighborhood. These are, uh, why the Planning Commission recommended denial for the project. Next slide, please. The applicant has provided a response letter, and that is attached also, uh, to the staff report for this project tonight. Next slide, please. So for the project overview itself, it's to demolish four existing single-unit residences and construct three duplexes in their place for six units total with a net. So that would be a net increase of two units. And to provide seven off-street parking spaces and nine long-term bicycle parking spaces and sh- four short-term bicycle parking spaces. Next slide, please. So because the project is fewer than 10 units, it is not subject to unit mix requirements. All units do have two bedrooms, and the upstairs units also provide a bonus area. It's not subject to family-friendly design guidelines, although the applicant has provided family-friendly amenities, and affordable housing impact fees are required. Next slide, please. So here's a shot of the existing, uh, buildings from street view. Next slide, please. And here is the proposed, proposal to go in its place. Next slide, please. So for the, um, pardon me, for the site plans here, we have the existing. We just saw, uh, the four existing units on the left, and then what's proposed is the three, uh, buildings, three duplexes on the right there. Next slide, please. So this would change the curb cuts. So, uh, the planning regulations state that parking shall not be in the front setback, and the design guidelines state that parking should be located where it has the least visual and physical impact on the street. And this includes not having more than one 10-foot wide driveway. So, the current project has a driveway for each existing building, whereas a proposed project provides a continuous curb and only one driveway and parking in the rear, and we'll see that in a moment. Next slide, please. So here is the parking for the, um, 47th Street Homes at the rear of the property. Next slide. And here it's highlighted so you can see it a little bit better. Most of the parking is in the rear units, um, accessed by that single driveway in the west end of the property. You see at the bottom of your slide, and there's two parking spaces along that driveway as well. Next slide, please. Bicycle parking is also mostly provided in the, um, garage areas. There's parking for both cargo bikes and, uh, rack spaces as well. And then there's also, of course, a short-term parking at the curb. Next slide, please. Landscaping plan, since, uh, your last review has been provided. I know it's a lot to see on this single slide, but what this is demonstrating that is, uh, complete landscape plans have been provided along with a complete plant palette, and that it meets Welo regulations. So that's water-efficient landscaping guidelines and regulations. Next slide, please. And the open space has changed a bit. Also, the private open space is shown in muted green here on the ground floor. That's in the front yards and on porches. And on the second floors, it's in, uh, porches that have been enlarged since you previously saw this project. Common open spaces are in the brighter green on the ground floor, and they are located between the buildings. Next slide, please. Here is an elevation from 47th Street. Next slide, please. So we're basically walking around the building. So this is if you were walking down the driveway on the west side of the building. Next slide, please. And then you would come to the back of the buildings. And then, next slide, please. And this is the east side of the project. Next slide, please. So the floor plans are largely the same for what you pre- previously saw with the changes to the bicycle parking mentioned. And there is more family-friendly features, such as the bedrooms are not accessed, uh, directly from the common areas, and, uh, the previously mentioned increased, uh, private open space. Next slide, please. And the red arrow is indicating that, uh, a lift has been added for the ADA unit, so that's been a modification to that. Next slide, please. And this is a sample of the second-floor plan and, uh, the larger porches, which are shown on the right side of this slide. That would be the 47th Street side. Next slide, please. So here is a rendering. We saw this one earlier from 47th Street. Next slide, please. And here's a rendering from the back, uh, looking down to the rear of the property, and 47th Street is in the background on this, uh, slide. Next slide, please. So for general plan, uh, the land use classification is medium-density residential. This is also located in an area of stability, which means it's an area that's not anticipated to change, uh, significantly. However, it doesn't mean that you can't have any demolition or any construction or building modifications. Those things can still happen in areas of stability. Next slide, please. The zoning district is medium-density residential. There's no overlays. Existing uses are multi-unit residential. The proposed use is multi-unit residential, and multi-unit residential uses are conditionally permitted in RM zone, part of the reason we are here tonight. Next slide, please. Demolition of existing, of existing residential structures is why the City Council is reviewing this project, because this requires Planning Commission recommendation for any demolition of a residential structure in Emeryville, and then City Council approval. Next slide, please. So for the zoning analysis, no bonus points are required for this project. Uh, it conforms to the .5 FAR maximum for base and the residential density of 20 units per acre, uh, for base. And there is no bonus building height. There is only 30 feet maximum. Next slide, please. So parking for the six units, um, as you know, there are no, uh, parking minimums, and, uh, this is less than the parking maximum of eight spaces, provided as seven spaces, one per unit plus one guest. And the bicycle parking, um, has two long-term spaces provided per unit and four short-term, which is more than is required. My code. Next slide, please. The project is compliant and exceeds, uh, setback and open space requirements. Next slide, please. So for findings, there's five conditional use permit findings that need to be made. Next slide, please. There's three, uh, permit findings that need to be found for demolition of residential units. Next slide, please. And then there's, uh, three that need to be found for major designer view. All of the findings that staff has made can be found in the staff report and written about in detail. Next slide, please. For the Housing Accountability Act, it applies to this project and governs the disapproval and conditional approval of housing and development projects. It's interpreted and implemented in a way that affords the greatest weight to the approval of the housing. The city may only deny or conditionally approve a project that may have the effect of denial, a fully market-rate housing development project, if it can make certain written findings based upon a preponderance of the evidence and the record. So, uh, the City Council may only decline to approve a project if it can make, um, findings A and B. And if it cannot make findings A and B, then the city has to approve the project. Next slide, please. So finding A is the housing development project would have a specific adverse impact upon the public health or s- safety unless the project is disapproved or approved upon the condition that the project be developed at lower density. So a specific adverse impact means a significant, quantifiable, direct, and unavoidable impact based on objective identified written public health or safety standards, policies, or conditions. Next slide, please. And B is there is no feasible method to satisfactorily mitigate or avoid the identified adverse impacts other than the disapproval of the development project. Next slide, please. For environmental re- review, this project is exempt from environmental review under SEQA. Next slide, please. And staff recommends tonight the City Council consider the attached resolutions. One is for the approval, subject to the attached conditions of approval, and one is for denial of which findings need be made for that denial. So that concludes my presentation this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now open it up to clarifying questions. Okay, I see no clarifying questions. Therefore, I see it as 8:03. I will open the public hearing and go to the city clerk for comments. See a hand from a member from Charlie Bryant? Is that accurate?
You may be wanting to mention that the, um, applicant had a presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry, you were correct.
I'm going to allow Mark Rhodes to speak. I believe that's going to be our presenter, and then I will share the presentation presently.
Perfect.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. Am I on, am I on here?
You are, and I'm just pulling up your presentation.
Oh, thank you so much.
Just let me know when to advance each slide.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, uh, thank you so much for your time this evening and your consideration of this project so far. We'd also like to thank the Planning Commission, uh, your staff and community members who've taken their time, uh, to help guide this project as well. And we believe that through this process, um, we have a much better, uh, project in front of you this evening. Next slide, please. As you can see, and as staff has described, we are proposing a very contextual project that also will provide the city, um, with two net new units. And I know that's not a lot of units, but during these times, I think that every unit is important. Um, but the issue that's really been sort of dogging this project all the way through is the potential, um, uh, of displacement, um, for our last resident family, um, on the property. Next slide, please. And in our opinion, this has been the most important issue with respect to moving the project forward. Um, we're pleased to be able to report this evening that an agreement has been reached with Ms. V Sim that will provide her with, um, some rental relocation money, and also with a binding contract to return to the property in one of the new units. Um, I also have it on, um, um, I also have information that she fortunately is also able to remain in the neighborhood, uh, during construction, so she is not having to, um, go far. Um, next slide, please. I'm, I'm gonna skip this. Uh, I'm, you know, desperate to find things that your staff didn't go over in the thoroughness of their report, and we, I really appreciate that. So next slide, please. The key changes to the project, again, have been identified by Navarre, um, but these are really important. The first one, we just talked about, um, and we believe that that is a, a, an excellent resolution. Uh, we've been able to expand the, the open space areas. Um, and those are suggestions from Planning Commission and even some of the neighbors. And we've revised the unit plans to incorporate more family-friendly design guidelines. Councilmember Bouters, I think, took us to task on that last time, and, and I think that it caused us to really redouble our efforts to make sure we were providing the nicest unit layouts possible. And then we've provided far more extensive documentation relevant to the need for demolition versus rehabilitation of the existing units. Um, next slide, please. Let's go ahead and go through that one. Staff has, has gone through that one. So, this is the choice point, really, uh, with respect to the project still, and we, as the applicant team, have not proposed to change, um, the design of the project. But what's at issue, of course, are these large, mature, very nice trees, um, that are kind of a focal point for the neighborhood. But in order to retain those trees... But in order to retain those trees in the project, we would have to compromise three things, two things. First of all, we'd have to compromise a better neighborhood design. Curb cuts, driveways, garages facing the street for some of the units in order to provide that parking and move it away from the back. And that, of course, is inconsistent with many of your design general plan guidelines. Then also, a lot of the neighbors really didn't like the fact that there were only seven parking spaces for the six units. So again, you'd probably likely lose parking spaces overall in order to do that. And last, we think that replacing the trees is the best solution here. We can actually, over time, provide more tree canopy likely than is on the site currently. And let's skip the next two slides and go to slide number 10, please. And I think it's important, next slide, that we want to address this tree replacement. Because if we planted as many young trees today as there are, as there is a trunk circumference today, we would end up probably with a forest so dense on this site in 20 or 30 years that you may not be able to walk across it. So we want to be able to work with staff and, or that this condition can be interpreted as when they reach maturity, they would have the same trunk diameter as what's there now. But in my opinion, I don't think that's really enough. So we'd like to provide more than that, but not at the level that would cause potential other problems in the future. Next slide, please. So with that, again, thank you very much. We're happy to try to answer any questions that you have or at least address them. And we look forward to moving the project forward as quickly as we can pending your approval. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any clarifying questions for the applicant from the council? Okay, I will now take comments from the public.
And Mayor Pats, I do have three online comment cards, so bear with me while I pull those up and read them to you.
And I see at least one raised hand.
And so we're opening the public hearing at?
8:09.
From Katie Mulcoy. Hi, thanks for taking my comments. I've aired my grievances against this project at every opportunity afforded to the public. My chief complaints for the project are, one, it doesn't fit in with the aesthetics of the historic Triangle neighborhood. Two, there will be no affordable below market rent units. Three, the parking plan is not user friendly. Two 90-degree turns and no turnaround will result in more vehicles parked on the street where parking is already too limited. And four, building materials are cheap and will not endure or wear well over time. What I'm really worried about is the type of landlord Mark Forbes and his family business is. According to the proposed plan, Mark's brother was in charge of managing these properties. The brother, now deceased, was not a good landlord, refusing to repair or replace broken furnaces, deferring maintenance, not providing other basic housing necessities and allowing two of the four structures to remain uninhabited for more than a decade, all the while increasing rent annually as much as possible on the two remaining tenants. This is no way to treat anyone and the Emeryville City Council should definitely not allow any of its citizens to be subjected to this abuse. I'm suspect that Mark Forbes will be much better than his brother. The Forbes family holds 100-plus properties and I find it surprising that a family in the business of professional landlord lording slash land development would have so little control over how their businesses run. They were complacent. Allowing the existing buildings to be torn down and allowing Forbes to push the remaining tenants out would be to let this family off the hook for years of bad behavior. They gamed the system for as long as they needed to. And now that the last tenant has moved, the Forbes family may be rewarded by receiving permission to disrupt the peace of our neighborhood and build ugly and expensive homes. No way. They're not hurting for money. Make them fix the homes as they stand, sell them, or find the Forbes family slash company if they continue to let them sit vacantly. Thank you, Katie.
Did you get a second card?
I do. This one does not have a name. As a tenant living on 47th Street next to the proposed redevelopment, I oppose the demolition of the existing 47th Street homes. The landlord's actions, refusing to maintain the homes, pressuring long-term tenants to move out, clearing out a property and leaving garbage piled on the sidewalk for days, show that he is not invested in this community beyond what he sees as potential for income. I stand with my neighbors who wish to preserve the integrity of 47th Street, both in terms of the historical structures and the community culture. And there's one more. And this one is from Dana Westmoreland.
Pause one second. I see her online with her hand raised.
Okay.
I want to give her the opportunity to speak as opposed to reading her card.
Okay. Let me see.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Hi, thanks. I wasn't sure if I was going to get off work early enough. I just have some bullet points to review. You guys know how I feel about this. The main point is the project is detrimental, in my opinion. The landlord hasn't taken care of the property. And I don't know how he's going to take care of this new prefab. The carbon footprint of the existing majestic trees. I don't think the plan allows for the same amount of trees to provide the same shelter for the red-tailed hawks that live in the vicinity. And these trees are obviously an extension of Timiscow Creek Park. So you're taking a chunk of trees, large trees, just like out of the park. He says the houses are in disrepair, but just yesterday, Sunday, I was in the basement of Mimi's house as she was selling all of her belongings so she could move into a smaller place across the street. And that house is solid. Those houses are solid. We know this. I'm concerned that the construction this size, a project this size, will alter the ground and shift these homes. My house is on a retaining wall. That really concerns me. The driveway of that house is really messed up. So that means there is some shifting. The waste created during demolitions is unnecessarily filling our landfills. 90-degree turn into a driveway, plus the exhaust in people's backyards and my backyard, 25 feet away from the driveway with no trees to absorb any of it. But these little things, they're going to pick up at a nursery, maybe. Folks are going to park in the street probably because that parking lot looks a little difficult. Four affordable homes for six doesn't really contribute to affordable housing. While this plan's legal, I don't think it should be. I mean, they meet all the requirements, but if there's a maximum or a minimum, they barely make each one of those. So they're right on the line with all of that. I don't know anyone around here who's in favor of this, except for the guy who wants to build it. So there's that. Yeah, I've been on this. Everybody knows how I feel about it, but here I am again. And thank you for your time. Please don't allow it to be a precedence, saying Emeryville just lets people tear down houses and build expensive housing. Because if we really want to bring in businesses to Emeryville, you have to have a place for people to live. And if they can't live there, businesses aren't going to move in. I wouldn't open a business if it wasn't a place where people could afford, where I could pay them where they could live. You know what I'm saying? So, and like I always say, if you're not changing it, you're choosing it. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
I see a few other hands raised.
Yes. I'm going to call on Jeff Seidel. I hope I pronounced that correctly.
Seidel, but yes, close enough.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you for your time. I live in the neighborhood around the corner. I visit Timiscow Creek Park and walk past these buildings almost daily with my dog. And my concern is threefold. It's changing the character of the neighborhood, the kind of historic charm of the neighborhood. And I feel like the new structures are not in keeping with that character. I'm concerned about removal of trees, which I feel add to the neighborhood as well as to the park. If you ever visit Timiscow Creek Park, those trees kind of hang over on the one side of the park and they make it, give it the look and feel that it has. And I don't like that good neighbors are being forced to move. So I oppose the project.
Thank you. Next is Brian Donahue.
Yes, the video, my video has kind of gone down, so I can't see. So I just wanted to ask, has the mayor turned his screen off? Has he left the Zoom call, at least his camera? Because he's required to do that. I want to make sure he's done it before I speak. Can anybody just tell me, has the mayor turned his video feed off for this? Can anybody volunteer that?
He has. Go ahead.
All right, thank you very much. Now I can continue. So, okay, first of all, I'd like to commend the staff because tonight they did something that's really unprecedented. They said you can decide. And they did recommend that you tear these houses down and let the applicant build the replacement housing. So that's unusual. I mean, for the 40 years I've lived here, the staff always recommends to let developer do what they want to do. And tonight, the staff, to their credit, said, it's your choice, which of course it is. But I've been asking for staff to do this for 40 years and finally here tonight they're doing it. So good on the Emeryville City Hall staff. Okay, so, but I shouldn't need to say this, but insofar that you have been led to not believe this, explicit in every, in any vote by any elected officials is the option to vote yes or no. So don't let anybody convince you anything other than that. You are allowed to vote no on this. And I don't know what the behind-the-scenes action is on that, but you can vote no. If you're, if you're required to vote yes, there would not be a vote. Okay, the applicant's talking about how the home, the existing homes are in a state of disrepair. I'm a contractor. I built homes for a living. I've done it for 40 years. Every single home virtually in Triangle and North Emeryville, the older housing stock, is in a state of disrepair. And some much, much more than these homes on 47th Street. So that's a scam. The disrepair argument is phony. Because that would mean we'd have to tear down the entire Triangle neighborhood. So don't listen to that. This is what I do. I rehab homes like this and I've done it for 40 years. Tearing down these affordable family housing, family friendly housing would be a tragedy because this kind of housing feeds, it is affordable and it feeds the school district, which we really need to do. These new homes would not be affordable. They probably wouldn't even attract families. But if they did, they certainly would not be the kind of families that would feed our local school district when that's something that we really need to be cognizant of. Because, you know, the Emeryville Unified School District has only, I believe, 40% Emeryville, or maybe 60% Emeryville residents.
That's your time.
Thank you.
And I have one more speaker. Alou de Urquiza.
Hello, thank you, everybody. I live around the corner. I'm Dana and Jeff. And I work all the time in front of the 47 houses. And I say the houses are great, just need a little bit TLC. There is no need for tearing down the houses. Also, this project doesn't prove the need for houses, on the contrary. And also remove, and I'm an agronomist, so I know about trees and carbon footprints, like I Dana say. So removing the trees is a huge impact to all of us, to the neighborhood. And also, as Dana said, the red-tailed hawk. So I'm opposed and I stay with my neighbors.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comment at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing at 8:21. Okay, it is now time for discussion. And so I will look to anybody who would like to go first here. Okay, Member Donahue?
What are the likely costs going forward if we say no? Meaning, there's a state fine that comes with resisting the state mandate for this kind of approval. What are the actual costs going forward? This is for Mr. Gena.
So, I'm sorry, I'm...
Costs to the city.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Gena. Well, again, if we say no, it's only if we say no without cause. So go ahead, Mr. Gena.
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, you're correct that if the council is unable to articulate findings that are, in denying the project, if the council is unable to articulate findings that are required under the Housing Accountability Act, then the developer has a cause of action against the city. And there would be costs associated with defending that action and any subsequent appeal. If, you know, and there are further consequences, potential consequences to the city if any court order that is adverse to the city is not obeyed.
Thank you. Other comments, Member Donahue?
Well, I wanted his actual dollar figure. You know, like, let's talk about the cost of litigation and the cost of the actual fine. Maybe it's something we could afford.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I think the city attorney is going to probably say what I will say more artfully. Member Donahue, that's not a subject of open session. So I would argue that the city attorney should not answer the question, if you will, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
I don't disagree with that either. I think, yeah, and let's leave it at that. Those costs would... Something else. All right, other clarifying or other discussion, Member Donahue?
Uh, no.
Okay. So again, I just remember the, I just remind everyone that the idea is not whether we say yes or no. It's whether or not we make findings based on the issue is what drives this. It's the findings that determine whether we have the ability to say no. It's not whether we want to say yes or no. So, Member Bouters?
All right, now, Mr. Mayor, I just have one question for staff. What was the date that this application was deemed complete?
This is Navar Oak speaking. I have to look that up. It will take me a few moments.
Member Medina, did you have a quick question, a quick thought, or did we...
I wanted to ask staff, I thought perhaps to focus our discussion, it might be helpful for them to put the two findings that we would need to make up on the screen. You can share that screen with us. So you can center on those findings as fact.
I can...
Sherry, if you could open the presentation document, the staff presentation, and go to the very last slide. There's a slide prepared with, go to the very end of that.
Oops.
Yep.
Was I there and I missed and I messed up?
Yeah, you were there.
Sorry. Am I getting close?
Yeah, keep going. Not even.
I'm sorry.
Hold with it.
I don't know what keeps happening.
Go back.
One more. Oh, keep going forward. One more.
Oh, there's a break. That's what the problem is. Okay, sorry about that.
And Navar, were we able to find the date?
No, I was helping Sherry there.
Sorry.
No, it's okay.
All the time, all of our searches.
And it will actually take me a few minutes. And it will actually take me a few minutes. I have to go poking.
Okay.
Oh, do you want me to go ahead, Mr. Mayor? I want to thank the members of the community for coming out. Again, I know you've organized around this. Really impressively, you attended our last council meeting for this project. You were at the planning commission. I saw your notes done and now, and I spoke with some of you about this project last time. And I want to thank you for your advocacy and your input. I think what has obviously changed directly due to your advocacy was the fact that there was a change in how the current tenant is being treated by the developer of this project. And, yeah, I think it's really directly due to the community impact. So congratulate yourselves on that. I do appreciate that the developer may not change this proposed project. I think that is an improvement massively. This isn't a vote on whether or not the city council likes the project. We can, of course, vote however we wish. But there are actual consequences, one way or the other. We are required to make these findings. And so I think we should focus our discussion around those, whether or not we can find that this is materially detrimental. And if there's material detriment cannot be mitigated. And so I understand the community is concerned about materially detrimental being materially detrimental because of removal of affordable housing. None of the current units have an affordability covenant on them, meaning legally, they are not affordable. They could be rented for any amount the developer chooses right now. That is a difficult finding for us to make, but I am, of course, sensitive to the fact that building newer duplexes would drive up the rent over what it is. I lived across the street from this project. I wasn't paying 3,200 to 3,500 a month. I fully understand. So I do think we can have a discussion over, like, if this fulfills our housing needs as a city and what their impacts would be.
Okay, um, thank you. Member Vouters, do you have other questions without the, the date, or are you?
I need the answer to that before I can finish formulating my, my thoughts on this, Mr. Mayor. So if you have comments or questions, I would happily defer to you for the interim period.
Yeah. No, mine are predicated on sort of what you were going to say. So let me see. Really quickly, I think I disagree about the affordability. I think the nature of the units made them affordable. But the, just the time and the quality and things, but that's, I hear what you're saying about the covenant of they're not required to be. But I think there is some things to be there. Sorry, I'm looking at, I'm reading while I'm speaking, which is not my strength. So.
Mayor, may I suggest we take these one at a time, then?
You know,
Mayor, may I make an alternative suggestion? May we take a five-minute recess to allow staff to do the work, and we can just come back in five minutes?
Yeah, that's what I was going to suggest as well. All right, so we're going to take a five-minute recess while we wait to hear back.
If I could just check in with staff. Maybe Charlie or Navar, you can give us a, maybe Charlie, since Navar is probably doing research. Charlie, could you give us a little update on status? The question?
Yeah, we've been trying to consult with Navar, and Andrea and I have all been trying to consult on this. I can tell you what we have come up with so far. We don't believe there is a specific date or a document that says this project is complete as of a specific date. However, Andrea recalls having met with Navar in their office in City Hall and going through the file at some point. And this was prior to the city council study session last January and concluding that the application was complete prior to January 1st of 2020, which meant that the SB 330 provisions did not apply to it. And as Navar just told me, we would not have brought it to the city council study session if it was incomplete at that time. So we believe that it was complete prior to January 1st, 2020. However, we can't locate a document that has a specific date for that.
Okay, before we go too far down this path, since we are not currently in open session, I don't want to have too much of a dialogue here.
Oh, we're not?
No, we are not. We have not readjourned. Okay, so at 8:39, I call the meeting back to order. Mr. Gena?
Thank you, Mayor. Then I would recommend that the the question of staff be asked and answered now that we're back in session.
Okay, so the question before us is, when was this project deemed, is it complete or, yeah?
Complete, yes.
Was the application deemed complete?
We do not have a specific date for that. However, based on, based on the Assistant City Attorney and Navar's recollection, they had a conversation in Navar's office prior to January 1st, 2020, where they had determined that the application was complete. And it was brought to the city council for a study session in January of 2020. And at that point, staff had determined that the application was complete.
I would like to, Mr. Mayor, just note on the record that the applicant and the city staff both make recommendations related to the Housing Accountability Act, which is found at Government Code Section 65589.5, under subsection, little letter J, J1. It states that when a proposed housing development project complies with applicable objective general plans, zoning and subdivision standards and criteria, including design review standards, in effect at the time the application was deemed complete. It seems like the staff have omitted a necessary finding to this application because there should be a date certain when this application was deemed complete. It's required under the very law, staff cites in their staff report, and it's used by the applicant in order to propose that this application be approved. And without a date certain, I'm uncomfortable making a ruling or a finding, Mr. Mayor, at this time. So I would like to make a motion to continue this matter until the next staff, or until the next council meeting, and give staff direction to come back and establish the date this application was deemed complete and explain why to the city council. That's my motion.
Yeah, and I'll second that motion. And so do we want to give both other council members involved a chance to speak before I call the question? Seeing no desire to do so, I call the question. Sherry, will you take a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Vouters?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue? Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Same.
Vice Mayor Martinez is recused, and Mayor Pats?
I will vote yes, which carries the motion. And so we're going to hold this item over. And without going too far publicly, I'm a little frustrated that this is the way this ended. City manager, would you please text the vice mayor to let her know to join us? I want to apologize to the applicant. It is many reasons we carry things over. But not having key information should not be one of them. Right, as soon as the vice mayor rejoins us, I will move on to item 12.1.
She's on her way. There she is.
All right, welcome back, Vice Mayor. And we're on to 12.1, the consideration of criminal penalties. And I will hand it over to the city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Assistant City Attorney Andrea Vischewara is going to be making the staff presentation for you tonight.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Pats. Would you like me to go ahead and start?
Please.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, and I am Andrea Vischewara, and I'm the Assistant City Attorney. And tonight, I am here to facilitate council's consideration of eliminating criminal penalties for violations of the municipal code. Next slide, please. A little background. The utilization of criminal penalties is one tool that is used in code enforcement. We've heard the council and the public's concern about the use of criminal penalties as an enforcement tool. But we need further direction as to how to address those concerns. Code enforcement is a complex subject. And so we envision that we may need to have a series of discussions with the council, similar to what we did with cannabis. The council may recall that the council was supportive of allowing cannabis, but we had to have a series of meetings for the council to develop and refine its policy objectives and goals before we could bring forward legislation implementing the council's policy. So really, tonight's goal is to get direction from the council so that we can go back and start that pen to paper. Next slide, please. This is an overview of tonight's presentation. I will go over three different types of code enforcement tools. And the reason why we're going over the three main types of code enforcement tools is that if the council decides to eliminate criminal penalties, then it may want to consider making other legislative changes to support either administrative or criminal enforcement. I will then go into the strategy and the use of code enforcement tools. And I'll conclude with offering some questions to help council's discussion. Next slide, please. The first code enforcement tool is civil enforcement, which is basically a lawsuit. The city is suing somebody to either compel them to take an action or to have them refrain from taking certain action. A good example would be 6701 Shell Mound, which was an example that was discussed in the staff report. And with that situation, the city did have to file a lawsuit in an effort to get the property cleaned up. Judicial actions can be very effective. However, they are also costly in terms of both time and expense. Litigation can take a lot of time if the matter goes to trial and if it has to go up on appeal. And often, it uses outside counsel and experts. Although there may be opportunities to recover costs in that litigation, rarely does the city recover all of its costs. Next slide, please. please. Moving on to our second type of code enforcement tool, we have administrative code enforcement. And there are two types of administrative enforcement tools. The first is the use of the permit. In order for a business to obtain and keep a permit, it must provide information to the city to show that it operates in compliance with the municipal code. A great example of this is we use permits to enforce our cannabis regulations, short-term rental regulations, and labor regulations for large hotels. If the businesses do not follow those regulations, then they either cannot get their permit, or if they have a permit, they run the risk of it being modified or revoked for not complying with the municipal code. The second type of tool is the use of an administrative citation and fine. Under the municipal code, first the city issues a notice of violation, basically a warning to the individual or the business that there's a violation and that it needs to be corrected. Only after that warning could the city issue a citation and a fine. And under our municipal code, the warning period has to be a minimum of seven days before the city can issue a citation and a fine. And the reason for the seven-day notice period is because we anticipate using admin sites and fines for code violations that need some time to fix. So, for example, if it's a property maintenance issue, you might need time to get a contractor out, to get a permit to fix it, which is why it's not just fix that and then fine right away. You have a minimum waiting period. And sometimes, the notice to correct period can be longer than seven days. Businesses are incentivized to comply because they want to avoid the cost of fines and penalties. These fines can accrue on a per violation and a per day basis. And property owners also want to avoid the cost of code enforcement. If it's a property-related condition, then the city can go in and abate the nuisance itself and do code enforcement action to recover its costs. So, administrative citations and fines are effective when financial penalties act as a deterrent. Next slide, please. And last, we have criminal penalties as our code enforcement tool. And criminal penalties include both misdemeanors and infractions for municipal code violations. And in terms of process, there's a lot of similarities between misdemeanors and infractions. As explained in the staff report, there has to be probable cause to issue a citation for either a misdemeanor or an infraction. And in general, the individuals released after a citation, assuming that they can provide identification to the police officer. And the burden of proof for both of them is beyond a reasonable doubt, which is the highest burden of proof. Where misdemeanors and infractions differ is in their consequences. Next slide, please. And so, really, the big difference between misdemeanors and infractions is with the misdemeanor, it's punishable by either a fine of $1,000 and/or six months in jail. Whereas, an infraction, under our municipal code, we've set it at escalating fines of 100 for the first offense, 200 for the second offense, and 400 for the third offense. And there is no jail time component usually. And then, because with misdemeanors, you have that risk of jail, you are entitled to a jury trial, and you also are entitled to a public defender if you cannot afford attorney. With an infraction, that's not the case. You are entitled to have a hearing in front of judicial officer, but you're not entitled to have an attorney appointed if you can't afford one. And in Alameda County, it's usually traffic commissioners that hear the infractions. Next slide, please. And so, although technically, Emeryville municipal code violations may be prosecuted as a misdemeanor, sorry about that, as a practical matter, they have not been prosecuted as misdemeanors recently. In 2019, Emeryville Police Department did not issue any misdemeanor citations for violations of the municipal code. In looking at what they had, the citations that they had issued in 2019, the vast majority of the citations for municipal code violations were related to parking. And there were less than 10 infractions related to non-parking matters. And sort of the next category were infractions related to animal control issues. And finally, it's worth noting that the district attorney in Alameda County will not prosecute violations of the municipal code as a misdemeanor. Here in Emeryville, and this is true of most cities in Alameda County, it's the district attorney that criminally prosecutes violations of the municipal code. That's not necessarily true in other cities. In other cities, you may have the city attorney or a specially designated city attorney, such as a deputy city attorney, or you might have a city prosecutor that prosecutes the municipal code violations. And overall, while you can criminally prosecute a business, it is difficult to criminally prosecute a business. There are usually other code enforcement tools that are favored when it comes to municipal code violations for businesses. Criminal penalties are best suited for Emeryville municipal code violations that relate to personal conduct. Next slide, please. And so, that is a brief overview of the three different types of code enforcement tools. And I want to just walk you through briefly how the city has used these in the past. And overall, the city's initial approach to code enforcement is through education and technical assistance. A great example of that is the fairly recently adopted smoking pollution control regulations, where what we really want is compliance because that is what improves public health. And so, we've partnered with the county. They've done outreach and education, both to individuals, so that individuals understand the risks associated with smoking, but then also to landlords and HOAs, so that they can work with their residents to get them to comply with the smoking pollution control regulations. And then, you know, it does happen on occasion where education and technical assistance is not enough to gain compliance. And so, the city then has to go into a more proactive approach. And for Emeryville, we usually ask two questions. What problem are we trying to solve? And what is the desired outcome or goal? And how those two questions are answered will factor into what code enforcement tools are used to try and address the situation. Next slide, please. So, on this slide, when I went back to watch the July 21st meeting, there had been a comment by council about understanding the difference between when an infraction might be used versus when an admin site and fine might be used. And that's especially true because the financial penalty, if you look at the last row on the bottom of the chart, is the same. And so, once again, our municipal code sets up admin sites and fines towards violations that need time to correct, and then also towards violations where we are ascertain the person who is violating the code, we're asserting their identity through public records. Whereas, an infraction is used more when you want the behavior to stop immediately. And that also, you're maybe not able to identify who that person is through public records. And so, to give you an example to help illustrate those differences, if you take an individual who is in a park, and let's say there's an off-leash dog, which can be in violation of the municipal code. And if you do an infraction, what would happen is that an officer would be able to stop the individual and inquire, is this your dog? And if there's yes, then the officer can give a warning. But let's say if it's somebody who's repeatedly not following the code, then the officer can obtain the person's identification and write the infraction citation. And then, if that person wants to contest it, what they do is they follow the instructions and they end up going to court in front of a traffic commissioner to contest the citation and the associated fine for the infraction. And sometimes, the court may issue a delayed payment date if the person needs time to come up with the money, or they may come up with a payment plan, and occasionally, there may be a community service component. So, that would be the infraction. For the administrative citation and fine, based on our current municipal code, it's much more difficult to enforce that type of regulation. The first one being is that if the person does not stop to talk to the officer, there is nothing the officer can really do to compel that person to talk to them about the dog that may be in the park off the leash. Second, even if they do stop and talk to the person, there is no obligation for the person to show the officer identification. So, the police officer may be stumped at how to identify this person in the future, which would be necessary because under our administrative citation process, first you have to give the warning, and then you can only cite them if it's not corrected seven days later. And so, that would become very difficult if you're not able to track the person's identity. But if they were able to do that and did issue a fine, if the person wanted to contest it, what would happen is that they would mail something into the city, and then the city would have to have a hearing officer who would then hear that person's appeal and then dispose of it. So, that's to give you an example of the difference between the infraction and the admin site and fine. And this table here is based off of the table that was in your staff report, but it is condensed. It doesn't have all the information from that table. So, that is where we are with this slide. Next slide, please. And so, finally, these are the policy considerations. The staff report has many more detailed questions in it. And what we tried to do with this slide is really to distill those questions into three bullet points and to help really just guide the conversation. And I can read them to you, or you can leave them up. But with that, this is the presentation. I am prepared to walk the council through the examples for 6701 Shell Mount, and I did touch on the smoking regulations, which were discussed in detail in the staff report. But I would defer to what the mayor and the council wanted to hear. I know that in working on the staff report, one of the things that has helped me is to, you know, come up with those hypotheticals, and you kind of twist them a little bit to try and understand what the differences are with the code enforcement tools. And so, with that, I will end my presentation, and I am available for questions.
Thank you. Sorry, since we have the presentation open, I'm going to go in order for clarifying questions. Member Bowers, any clarifying questions? Member Donahue, any clarifying questions?
Is it automatic with a misdemeanor that a jury trial would be required?
Should I go ahead and answer? I'm sorry, I can't see anybody, so I have no visual cues here.
Yes, please.
Okay, so, Councilmember Donahue, if the defendant evokes their right to a jury trial with a misdemeanor, then yes, it would proceed to a jury trial.
But they would have to invoke their right to it.
That is correct, but when they are arraigned, the judge reads their rights to them, and they go through a process to understand whether they can afford an attorney, and if not, if they'd like one appointed.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Member Medina, any questions? And Vice Mayor?
I was just wondering, Andrea, if you could provide some examples of what in Emeryville municipal code qualifies as a misdemeanor currently?
So, in the municipal code, there is a table in chapter, it's at the beginning of the municipal code, and it does list what some of those municipal code provisions are that are misdemeanors. But then, there are also other places in the municipal code where it says, you know, this provision specifically is a misdemeanor. So, for example, today, I was looking at our emergency disaster regulations, the process we go through, and rules related to responding to emergency disaster. If you do not follow those, then the violation of that would be a misdemeanor. I believe violations of our cannabis regulations are also a misdemeanor. Under state law, everything in our code can be a misdemeanor unless we specifically designate it as an infraction.
I understand. It would be helpful, however, to have a good understanding of what we're working with if this conversation continues.
And we can do that. One of the issues is because it's throughout the municipal code and not necessarily in one's place, I would need a little bit more time than I've had to prepare for tonight to come up with that chart.
That's understood, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, Vice Mayor?
No.
Okay, I'm good at the moment. I'll save mine till after public comments. So, City Clerk, do we have any cards submitted? And members of the public, now is the time to raise your hand.
We have no online speaker cards at this time, and I don't see any raised hands.
Okay, I'll now open it up for discussion. Mr. Bowers, you brought this item up, so I'm going to ask you to open the discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to staff for the presentation this evening. I agree that more time is probably needed by staff in order to... I agree that more time is probably needed by staff in order to effectively outline for my colleagues who haven't practiced criminal law, just kind of the rubric of what's laying in the code. My hope this evening, I know we kind of lost the shared screen so that Andrea could follow who was on the discussion table, but for the discussion points, my suggestion, my ask is that the city be bold, and I don't really think it's that bold, to be honest with you. But when you look at the challenges that we have in the national discourse around policing and racial equity in the administration of law and public safety and the realities we have around budgets and prioritizing public safety resources and staff time in those areas and how that plays itself out, I personally believe that we, with the exception of those things required by state law to be in the code as a misdemeanor or infraction, I personally believe that everything else in our code should be an administrative citation and that we should direct staff to develop, as the third bullet point on the discussion items, I believe said, develop the process for administering that effectively. I think that does a couple of things. One, I think it removes police from being in situations where they are, there's been an antagonistic but non-serious, non-violent encounter. People have a disagreement, the police are called and/or a dog is loose in the park and there's those kinds of scenarios where if there isn't actual harm to people, sometimes police intervention on top of something that's already been emotionally charged for people leads to the types of situations we've seen play out time and again across our country. And this is one of those ways in which I think we as a council can be thoughtful and preventative by removing those things from the space that fall within the ambit of police response and authority. This doesn't negate existing state law. We don't undermine the penal code. We're not erasing things that are actually deemed crimes in the state. We're not eliminating the vehicle code. We're not changing the health and safety code. And those have statewide and broad guidance to all cities and all jurisdictions and have their own enforcement mechanisms and laws that wouldn't undermine the enforcement of the current county health officers order, for example. But I think having this additional layer of municipal criminal regulation, although it is within the authority of cities to do it, I think it's actually harmful to both the efficiency of the police agency. I would like to see our officers out focused on and addressing things that are of serious nature to the community. But I also think it just instills a different ethos about what our city is about and what we're trying to accomplish as a community and what it means to live and work here. So I recognize that I'm going first with the mayor's permission here, but I'm actually asking my colleagues to consider pegging to the far end of the options that are on the list today and completely decriminalizing our code as allowed under state law.
Thank you. Would someone like to respond? Vice Mayor?
I want to thank Councilmember Bowders for bringing this forward. I very much trust his judgment and the work that he's done in the area of criminal justice reform. I'm happy to move in this direction as Councilmember Bowders has indicated. I do want to give staff room to make sure that they're able to do the job that they need to do. So while, you know, I would recommend we move in this direction, but make sure that staff is informing us if there are special circumstances or cases where we may need to have a tool in our pockets. And I agree, I don't think anything in our municipal code outside of state law needs to be a misdemeanor. But if there's, if there are tools that infractions give us in very special, limited circumstances, I think that we need to understand what those are, but I think that we can err on the side of, as Councilmember Bowders said, decriminalizing our code.
Thank you. Member Medina or Member Donahue, do you wish to comment? Member Medina?
Yeah, thank you so much, staff, for that presentation and Councilmember Bowders for bringing this forward. I agree, I like the move towards decriminalizing our code, removing misdemeanors makes intuitive sense, I totally get that. I share Councilmember Martinez's interest in getting more information about infractions because I think the thing that jumped out to me in the staff report was the need for administrative process. And so I just want to make sure we have the staff capacity. If we're shifting things out of one department, that we have it in a different department to handle those things, right? If all of a sudden other staffers is handling dog park complaints, who is that? And I think we need to account for that in advance.
I agree with all of the council members who have spoken before me sentiments.
Thank you, Member Donahue, and thank you, Member Medina. Again, thank you to staff for this. I think the amount of time is where I am sort of stuck. When Member Bowders suggested this, I forget how large and antiquated municipal codes can be and pulling it up all on a single table can be daunting and requires a lot of staff time and work. I think the sentiment, I 100% agree with. I think the challenge we have is I'm worried about its impact. I don't know the lot of the, a lot of the things for where our officers get involved in conflict may or may not arise from our municipal or criminal codes, but I don't think the people calling know, and I don't think the officers fully know the extent until they're on scene. And so I do, I do wish we had broader authority to do, change some of the quality of life crimes. And then the converse, it's just my night to be contradictory about my own opinions. The converse is I am such, I have a visceral reaction when I see people litter. It is all I can do not to grab the item and throw it back in their vehicle or their face. And one day I will snap and that will be the cigarette butt or wrapper of a candy bar moment for me. So while I am fully on board and suspect that I will want to eradicate even more rules, I would like to see the list because I know there's going to be one on there that I'm like, no, that's a personal thing for me, I need that to be a misdemeanor or more likely an infraction. And so I think this is absolutely 100% the direction we need to move in, but I don't think a blanket, let's change it all at once thing, I want to see what they are. And I also believe we have time to do this because the majority of things are going to be covered by state law, not by our municipal code, that are the quality of life challenges. So for me, I think it's important that we task staff with generating the list so we can see it and bringing it back to us. And maybe I'm wrong, maybe it is all one blanket, but I would like to make sure there are certain things that we do have some ability to leverage. Generally, it's I want to leverage people who have property, not those who are struggling. So with that said, I don't think we need to take an action this evening. I think we need to provide staff direction. And so I will throw it back to Mr. Bowders to respond to all of us if he would like and appreciate the work he has done on this. And then check with the city manager and city attorney if they have enough direction from us.
I mean, I think I heard a uniform interest in seeing the ambit of things that exist, which I agree with. I heard some folks, I heard a majority of folks say, yeah, we don't need misdemeanors, but we want to discuss infractions. I heard a couple, I heard one person say they want to look at the list one by one. And so it sounds just like we need to see the list. And I guess my question would just be, Mr. Mayor, to staff, if we asked for that before the end of the year, would that be feasible?
I'll go to the city attorney for that because I think it's his office that will be generating that.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I think we can, we can provide that list to the council before the end of the year and we'll, we'll schedule it for a future council meeting this calendar year.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. With that, I think we are done with 12.1.
Sorry, can I, I just want to make sure that I'm crystal clear when I go back to write the chart. So you're looking for a chart that's going to list all of the misdemeanor code provisions and then the infraction provisions as well. And then are you looking for any further information about potential changes that might need to occur as it relates to administrative citations and fines and that process? Or are you just looking for the chart at the moment?
I think we're just looking at infractions and misdemeanors, but I will throw it to Councilmember Bowders.
I would ask, Mr. Mayor, if there's majority support that the additional thing to the city attorney's last question there was a nod towards whether there should be any process-related changes for the implementation of administrative citations. And I would just ask that if staff feel, especially if there's going to be council appetite or interest in eliminating either misdemeanors or infractions, that if staff have specific recommendations they would make about what process changes might need to be put into the code in order to effectuate that better, that they be allowed to propose those things. That would be my thing.
Go ahead, city manager.
And if we are able, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, we will also try to give you a cost estimate for the additional infrastructure and resources that would be necessary to transition to that system.
Thank you.
When we do that, can I ask that there also be some level of estimate as to how much time will be saved from the current system?
We can do that relatively easily right now. There were 240 citations issued by the police department in 2019, 230 of them were parking violations. All those are administrative in any event and will be handled by parking citation, parking enforcement officers. So that leaves, I think, nine infraction citations that were issued for animal-related topics.
So all the non-parking ones were animal-related?
I can't say for sure because I don't have the stuff in front of me, but predominantly, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I think that was, yeah, okay. Excellent. With that, I'm going to move on to 12.2, League of Cities Annual Conference Resolutions. And Sheri, is this you?
It is. There is no staff report tonight. This item is merely to discuss and provide guidance to your voting delegate on the one resolution that was submitted to the League for its annual conference. And that was all provided in your staff pocket.
Excellent. Before we go to, I believe, Member Bowders is our representative, voting representative. Let's take, is there any public comment on this? I'll be shocked if there is.
There is none, thank you.
I am not shocked, good. My heart cannot take it at this point in the evening. Member Bowders? Well, let me do this. Does anybody have strong feelings about how we should be voting on the, how we should encourage Mr. Bowders to vote? Vice Mayor?
I have more mixed feelings. This resolution seems to be aimed at unrest and looting, but I, just reading it, the first thing that pops into my mind is the criminalization of sex workers who use the internet to do their work without involving third parties and often need the internet to do their work safely. So I think there are people who could actually be harmed by the League taking this on. I'd love to hear what my colleagues think.
Member Medina?
I professionally have to talk a lot about CDA 230. So I was really interested to see the League take this on. We know where this is coming from and listen, I, yeah, I do trust Mr. Bowders' discretion on this. I think we should, as a city, be opposed for a variety of reasons. One, I was just about to focus on this massive First Amendment rights issues, implications for the same communities that Member Martinez just brought up as well. They're, by creating criminal liability for platforms in such a broad-stroke fashion, I mean, first of all, I don't think this is going to do anything. I don't think Congress is going to be like, oh, the League of City has been like just repeal of CDA 230 because the impact of this on our everyday life would be massive, actually. But yeah, I don't think this is a very nuanced and thought-out thing. I do think CDA 230 is ripe for reform. I'm interested in gauging around that conversation. I just don't think this is the document to do so.
Great, thank you. Member Donahue?
Well, you know, I looked at this and I just thought, you know, this is like so complex, really. And, you know, we're the city of Emeryville and this is having to do with First Amendment versus, you know, criminal activity using platforms. It just seems out of our purview.
Okay, thank you. Member Bowders, I will give you my comments and then take yours because I think you're getting a sense of where the direction is going.
So far, we're three, there's three out of my four comments have been said by three different people, so I'm like, I'm loving this, keep going.
So I'm looking at the list of people, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the list of cities that brought this forward. And I think I'm the only person here who can say I've been to every one of those cities.
You've been to Hawaiian Gardens, what?
I've been to Hawaiian Gardens, behind the orange curtain. Memory serves. I could be mixing it up with the difference, there's a lot of little cities right clustered together behind the orange curtain. And they're all places I wouldn't live, but have lived in two of. So with that, boy, this is wrong, boy, is this awful. Boy, do I agree with what everybody else has said. And most importantly, it's ineffective, but I don't know that our one voice vote will, you know, John, you're a powerful speaker, so I'm charging you. Go in there and move the hearts and minds of the League of City. Member Medina, go ahead.
I was just going to say, please carry on the legacy of calling this off of consent and taking off the entire room's League of City for us.
Yeah, so you all said all of my talking points, I love it. My first point was Member Donahue's point, which was this is not the appropriate ambient of cities to weigh in on the First Amendment rights of people in relation to comprehensive internet monitoring and stuff. This is like, that's why they're calling on Congress to do it. The second one was the one that Councilmember Medina said, which is, you know, there, this is like, even if we were to do it, it goes like way too far. It's not nuanced enough. It doesn't really have the right balance of approach to do things. The third was all the justice reasons, which I think Councilmember Martinez spoke to and about how this could criminalize people. And then I think, Mr. Mayor, you kind of hit it home because my last thing was going to be, I would, I was going to come tonight and as Councilmember Medina knows, my ask was going to be, if we don't have some sort of like real strong opinion as a group that you entrust me to listen at the committee and do the thing I do at the committee, which is be a shit disturber on this issue and remind cities that we do not need to be draconian and tyrannical over our people when it comes to their civil rights and liberties. So I will say that there was a pitch, a group of people pitched me to run to be the chair of the committee next year. I will tell you, I'm not going to, not going to run to run that committee. Oh my gosh, that would be, that would be an amazing disaster. But I will listen at the committee meeting next week or two weeks from now, I think, on the 29th, something like that. And then we have the full vote. But as you alluded to, Mr. Mayor, I don't think anyone's going to care, and as Member Medina knows from her service on this board, they do not care if I try to pull this and they do not care if I scream no. So, but you know, it feels good to go down, going down, having voted our conscience. So I think what I'll do is, I have a general sense of what folks think. I think it's representative of our community as well and I appreciate the input.
All right, so that is your direction from us. Department head reports.
I don't believe we have any, Mr. Mayor.
Future agenda item requests from council members. Member Donahue?
Well, I have a question for Charlie before he goes away. Charlie, are you available?
I'm here.
One more second.
You know, the bio-med proposal as a planned unit development from, I guess it was...
So I'm going to pause you one second because it looks like the city manager wants to interrupt.
So just a reminder, council member, if this is framed as a request for future scheduling, if you could just make sure that you... if you could just make sure that you put it in that format, since that item isn't really on the agenda tonight.
Okay, it might be, become an agenda item, depending upon the answer that Charlie gives.
May I also interject that I'm, under the city attorney's advice, I'm currently recused from having any comment or position on this, so if that's the subject of the item, may I ask, Mr. City Attorney, should we take other future agenda items first, and then should I leave the dais for the purposes of that discussion?
I'm going to, I'm going to do this instead. So I'm going to ask the city manager to check in with Mr. Donahue on this item and get his question answered offline, and then I will, whatever the topic is, and I don't know, I will caucus only with him on this, bring it to him, and we may talk about putting it on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Councilmember Donahue, we can help craft a future scheduling request with you, if that's, if that is where that goes. I'm happy to help with that.
Perfect. And I'm looking to my other council members that they're all okay with that. So perfect. All right, any other future agenda items? Seeing none, all right. That brings us to the adjournment, and while it's not on the agenda, I think we all quite remembered a former council member and mayor, Davis, quite well. And with that, we are adjourned at 9:28. Thank you, everybody. I think this was one of my more challenging meetings, I did not do my best tonight, so have a good one.